All right. Good evening, everybody. I'll call to order this meeting of the North Middlesex Regional School District School Committee for Thursday, November 16th, 2023. As a reminder to the committee and the guests that this meeting is being recorded. So we'll do the roll call. I don't see David. All right, Jess?
Here.
June?
Here.
Lisa Bloom?
Yeah.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan? I see Susan's name. I don't hear Susan's voice.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Tom?
Here.
And I'm also, that is a quorum. Thank you. Our next scheduled meeting of the North Middlesex Regional School Committee will be held at 6:00 PM on Thursday, December 21st. First order of business is our consent agenda. We have minutes, account payable warrants, payroll warrants, two donations, and disposal of surplus. Kyocera flip phone. Sure, that's worth a lot to a museum. Take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Martin and she has. So this is to approve the consent agenda. Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yep.
Susan? Susan, I can't hear you if you're talking.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear you, so that's why I didn't respond.
Oh, this is the consent agenda. Just roll call for approval.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Tom?
Yes.
And I will, yes, so that is unanimous. I did not see any public communications this evening.
I know, Craig, I know Tyler Lapierre wanted to speak, sent in an email. I did, I did send him the, the link to fill in the form. I don't know if he did that the last time I checked, he had him, so, but he is here if you want.
Yeah, that's fine. Yep, just a reminder, three minutes is our, is our time limit, and unless something's on the agenda, we won't be able to engage in discussion, but obviously appreciate input and feedback.
A long to talk.
Okay, thank you.
You should be all set now.
Hello?
Good evening.
Hi. Am I able to present anything or no?
Not during my call.
Not on the computer, okay. I'll just roll through my presentation verbally then. So I'm Tyler Lapierre. I've worked at Hawthorne Brook for eight years now. I live in town. I grew up in Townsend. I bought a house here a couple of years ago. I just want to talk about a program we run at Hawthorne Brook that I think is really cool, and I just was hoping the community could know more about it. Called Hawthorne Basketball League. It's an intramural program we run during the fall every single year. Four divisions. We have girls' fifth and sixth grade, boys' fifth and sixth grade, girls' seventh and eighth, boys' seventh and eighth. We run for seven weeks. Each division plays once a week from 2:30 to 4:00. Kids pay $30 for the entire season. They all get a jersey. We get patched referees for every single game. And what was kind of exciting about it this year was that we got 131 students to sign up to play. And every single one of them, except for one, continued the entire duration of it. That ends up being 29% of the entire Hawthorne Brook student population, so almost 3 in 10 of the kids in the school play, 38% of all boys, 21% of all girls. This year, we added a seventh and eighth grade division. We ended up getting 42 boys in that division and 24 girls. In the past, when I tried this five years ago, we had three seventh grade girls sign up and three eighth grade girls sign up, so six total in the upper grades, and now we're up to 24. Girls' tryout numbers have like increased significantly over the last two years. We easily get over 30 now. It used to be like 16 to maybe 20 if we were lucky, so it's kind of growing the program at school. As far as kind of community building, it takes place in the fall, provides an excellent opportunity for students to make new friends within the grades and across grades, so beginning of the year is when we kick it off. Students wear their HBL shirts to school on game days, so we see a lot of them. This year, we played All-Star Games during advisory, so we had the bleachers completely filled with students, and our All-Stars played in front of them for the whole school, or at least for most of the school. Each division has two family days per season where families are allowed to come and watch the games. These events have been extremely well attended, and this year, we also had parents volunteer to help coach, which was really cool and helpful. Some of the extra things that we do in this league, we do have patched referees for every single game. We get jerseys for each player with an individual number, so it's unique to them. We keep stats, which is really cool, so points, rebounds, and steals. I have some awesome high schoolers and middle schoolers who helped me with that. We like that because usually the kids are only worried about scoring points, but this kind of gives recognition to those who are doing the other things as well. The teams are typically pretty even since I know their skill levels and I'm able to make the teams. Every single team in the league this year won a game and every single team lost a game at some point. We do announcements every single morning. We do playoffs. We do an award ceremony, and like I said earlier, this year, we're doing All-Star Games. I also make a newsletter each week called the HBL Weekly. I wish I could show it to you right now. Maybe I can email it to some of you later. It's pretty in-depth. It has like standings and league leaders and players of the week. We post that in the gym, and the kids love to see it every week. We make award certificates for some of our top players in different statistical categories, so we give those out. I can also send you a picture of that as well. So part of the reason I wanted to say all this is just to kind of brag about how awesome of a program we have here. It's crazy that we have so many kids playing. On any, in any given class of 20 kids, you know, you probably have at least six of them that are involved in HBL coming every single week to play basketball. Another reason I'm bringing it up is because for the last two years, I have done this for free. And basically, it's a lot of hours, so just hours of the kids being there, six hours a week. I, you know, I made a bunch of lists. I wish I could present it to you, but I was pretty conservative with the numbers. You know, time spent cleaning up afterwards, putting in the stats, making the newsletter, compiling shirt order, working with provider, organizing all the forms and money. I can go down the list, and like I said, I'm pretty conservative about my estimates. I kind of figured out it was probably around 75 hours of work total, but again, if you ask my wife, it's much more than that. So I, like, again, I'm being very conservative, and just looking at like the intramural rate in the contract. If you'd really went by the $28.15, I'd be up around, you know, over $2,000 because I feel like I do 75 hours. So I know that contracts are up now, and negotiations are being made, and stipends are being talked about, so I kind of wanted to do this just so that, rather than just see Hawthorne Basketball League written on a piece of paper somewhere, you actually kind of had an idea of how great of a thing this is for Hawthorne Brook. The kids get way into it. We still have a couple All-Star Games coming up. I'd love to invite some of you guys to come with them after Thanksgiving. It's been a really good way of kind of building community and building the basketball program at Hawthorne Brook. Hopefully, I didn't go way over three minutes. Thank you so much for letting me talk.
Thank you, Todd. I appreciate that, and appreciate the background. If you do want to send additional information to the committee, you can certainly send that to nmschoolcommittee@nmrsd.org. I'm sure folks would be happy to take a look at that.
Awesome, thank you.
And appreciate you sharing the information about the program. Sounds very well attended, which is good, having the kids engage in that, giving them something to do out of school hours, obviously very good, so I appreciate all the effort you put into that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I think that was it for public comments, so we'll move on to Chairperson's report. The only thing I had, really, just to reiterate the importance of budget season as we're getting quickly into the, into the deeps of it. So for the, the two members of the public that are on right now, and those that hopefully watch this later, I just want to, again, encourage folks to get involved with understanding the budget, understanding the impacts of what goes into it, where money goes, the programs that it supports, and encourage folks, again, just to get involved, become educated, because come town meeting time, it's going to be a lot of, a lot of tough discussions, a lot of pressures on town budgets, taxpayers, and obviously the district budget as well, so. Encourage folks to ask questions, send us questions to the, to the committee, attend finance subcommittee meetings, and obviously school committee meetings, and again, become informed, ask questions. If something's not clear, please let us know. Happy to, happy to share more information as we, as we get it. A lot of us are in the, in it day to day, so we may not see things from the same perspective all the time, so again, just want to make sure people are involved. Next, we've got Superintendent's report. Superintendent Morgan?
Thank you. I just have some comments to make. They're actually going to lead right into new business with, with some student guests that we have here tonight. So just a brief presentation on the Credit for Life Fair before I turn it over to students. This evening, the school committee is going to hear from three of our very impressive high school seniors. As you are aware, civic action projects are now required across the state of Massachusetts. Since this initiative has been implemented, North Middlesex Regional High School Social Studies Department Head, Ms. Becky Jackson, and her department have embraced it. Their hard work have made civic action projects a reality in NM, and have truly made this a valuable process, process for our students, as I'm sure many of you saw last spring when they were displayed. The projects are designed to allow students to focus on an area of passion or importance to them and possibly initiate change. Last year, we sent a team of students from NM to visit the Credit for Life Fair that was held at Andover High School. One of the goals of the fair was not only to provide students with an array of activities related to finance, but also to push for the need for financial literacy in Massachusetts. Currently, financial literacy is required in both New Hampshire and Connecticut to graduate. I recently wrote a personal letter of support to the state legislature in support of House Bill S. 327 to make it a graduation requirement here in Massachusetts. The experience and information gained from the Credit for Life Fair was the impetus for our three juniors, now seniors, to develop a civic action projects, civic action project, and the need for a Credit for Life Fair here at NM. I've already met with the students and intend to continue meeting with them, so NM has both the opportunity to host a fair, but also consider the implementation of financial literacy courses at NM next year. As seniors, their cap is now behind them, but they're so passionate about this topic, they want to continue to work towards this goal to positively impact those that come after them. I found their cap to be impressive, and I feel that you'll, you'll feel their presentation is also impressive, and I would like to welcome with that Jackson Bailey, Joshua Gallagher, and Jack Amari, so that they can present their idea directly to the school committee.
Thank you very much. So I'm Jackson.
I'm Josh.
I'm Jack.
So we're just going to try and share the screen here for you guys for our presentation. Can you guys see that all right?
Not yet.
All righty. There we go. Sorry about that, guys.
Is it showing?
Go Chrome Tab.
Yeah, sorry about that. Here we go.
Let's go in.
Yeah, we'll just do the entire screen for now. We should be all set.
There we go.
Awesome, perfect. So as Mr. Morgan was saying, this all started as our civic action project. For those unaware, civic action project, it requires us to focus on an issue, either like local, national, or even global. And we decided as a group that we wanted to focus on the issue that people our age, our fellow peers, lack the basic financial literacy to navigate in the world today. So here's some statistics from Experian. This is kind of from a national level. As you can see, 1 in 5 American 15-year-olds do not know basic financial concepts. That one stood out to us because it is people our age, so we know firsthand when it comes to people not understanding exactly like what they're getting into. We ran some, we ran a survey. We passed out a physical paper survey to a bunch of different classes and collected data. With that, we did find some shockingly kind of sad data. Four out of the 46 people that we interviewed correctly told us what ROI means, return on investment, or interest, and an additional 63% of them did have debit cards, so it's kind of concerning to see that these people did have that spending power, and they didn't know what they're, what they're really getting into. This also just kind of shows you that this is becoming an issue. As you can see, 2016 average debt is definitely higher, especially spiking around that 40-year-old range, and we expect it to go higher with the way everything's so expensive today. To combat this, we looked at the Credit for Life Fair. I was one of the lucky individuals to go to the Andover Credit for Life Fair, and I learned a lot from that. So the Credit for Life Fair is run through Massachusetts government, pretty much, like they have a, they have a guidebook, and they have a lot of resources on their mass.gov website. Basically, how it works is you show up to the fair. There's little vendors almost, so you have like your realtors, you have your auto dealerships, and on your phone, you choose a profession of your choice, so I choose like biologist or a teacher. They give me a set monthly salary, and then I personally have to budget that through buying a car that would be required for my job, work attire, and all these other factors involved in everyday life. And you can use your debit card, your credit card, or your savings account to do this. What we found out, like just overhearing other people, there was one girl standing next to me who was a senior in high school, so a year older than me, and she racked up a little over $100,000 in virtual credit card debt, which is not the greatest thing, considering that she is a legal adult now. So we definitely think this is a huge issue, and I hope that you guys agree as well. We do agree the fair is probably our best case, especially getting started into this, because we understand that students, they're not going to be motivated to do this on their own. You know, I'm not sure if you guys have kids as well, but we like to think we know everything, when we, in reality, don't. And for me personally, this also showed me, hey, I don't know what I'm talking about, so we hope that this can get, get people motivated into themselves researching these, these concepts. So what's more important for you guys is how this is going to help you guys out. I believe there's going to be a domino effect. If your youth understands how to use their money and budget it well, it'll increase, you know, people will be spending more on social security, people will be spending more, boosting our economy. Parents will be proud because they're, you know, they're not paying for their kids everything. Banks, they'll be likely to use more savings accounts, opening more accounts in the banks. And then even as high school students, as peers, one can go and talk to their friends and say, hey, I have this question. Do you know anything about it? Employers, employers will love it because they like to know that their employees know what's going on, and that people will be more motivated to get a job and earn money that they're going to need. With this being said, we understand that budget is obviously a huge issue, as we found out through our own Credit for Life Fair stuff, budgeting is the end-all, be-all. Luckily for this, Massachusetts is pushing financial literacy, and the Office of Economic Empowerment has grants and other funds that we are able to apply for. We talked to Mr. Quormier, and he already submitted a request. I'm not sure if that's been accepted yet, but it is something that is already being looked into. And this fair usually doesn't even cost a lot of money. After talking to Andover and talking to how they've done it, they usually said that it doesn't cost money to set up, as the vendors are usually volunteers in the community. However, the one thing that does cost money is the banners. The software might have a little bit of cost, and then usually they just use it to buy Dunkin' Donuts for their volunteers and make sure that everyone's all happy. So logistics, we were hoping to have this fair, have the fair in the spring semester. With our class size, we want to just have it be the seniors only, especially as the first time going through this, mainly as we have a, I like to think we have a very nice senior class, and that they are mature enough to go through it first. The one thing with Andover that I did notice, the reason I kind of want to keep it smaller now, is that there'd be times that'd be long lines of people awaiting a booth to talk to, so having it just be one grade would help out, smooth out those lines. Timing for fair, we're thinking around an hour. It isn't an all-day event. The actual fair itself is, and we want a big space, whether cafeteria, annex, or the gymnasium are what we're looking at right now. So that is all that we have for you guys right now. If there's any questions, we'd be more than healthy, more than happy to answer them.
Very impressive, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from the committee? June?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say that that was a great presentation, and this is a great idea. I'm really glad you guys did this project. I, I attended last spring and got to see everybody's projects, and there were a lot of really great ones, and, but the, this one is standout, and I just want to thank the admin for listening to these students and moving forward with their idea, because I think it's great. So nice job, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson, thank you as well. Should be very proud of these three, and great job yourself, too.
Can I, yeah, can I just say thank you? I deserve none of the credit here. These boys, the whole civic action project, right, the goal is to get these kids empowered and showing them that they do have power to make change, and we are merely the facilitators. The majority of kids, you know, they left for summer in, in June, and that was it, and they didn't give it another thought, which is exactly probably what I would have done as a student as well. It was, I am not lying when I say it was the very first day of school this fall when those boys walked into my room and said, we want to keep going. It just, it made my heart happy, and so like, if we're going to empower our kids, there's nothing greater than you as the audience, as well as admin, taking our kids seriously and showing them that, yes, things that they care about do matter outside of their, you know, their, their wall. And so it's a good lesson for all of our kids every year if we're showing this of, you know, you do have voice, you do have power, but the kids just need a little guidance of how to go about that. How does that look like? What does that look in a real world? So I appreciate you all giving them the platform for this, too.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, yeah, and thank you to the, to the guys for that presentation. Very good, very detailed, and to the point, and I think one of the, the comments you made around kids think they know everything, I think one of the important takeaways for me is, despite that, recognizing there are gaps, and the three of you going off and finding a way to address that gap, and transfer some of that knowledge to, to your peers who are going to need that moving forward in life, so kudos to the three of you for stepping up and really taking the lead on this and presenting it to a forum like this. I know a lot, a lot of kids, when I was your age, didn't like speaking in front of people, so appreciate you all doing that, and great work, and look forward to seeing the outcome of it.
Thank you.
Thank you for caring, and thank you for acting.
Thank you.
Can I just say one more thing? Excellent. So as I mentioned earlier, this is something that we are going to continue to work on. I will be reaching out to Jackson, Josh, and Jack, probably within the next couple of weeks. We are awaiting to hear back on our grant application for the Credit for Life Fair, but did want to let the school committee know that they would see some financial literacy as part of the budget message for North Middlesex Regional High School next year as well, just again, due to their passion, and, and again, hearing from students and what their needs are before they go off to the workforce, before they go off to some type of post-secondary education and hearing what they need, I think is critical, so fully intend to have it be part of the FY25 budget. And that's in part to them, so thank you, and they'll, they will certainly be a part of this, so thank you again.
Just a question, Brad, for you, actually, on the grant piece. Without that grant, what, what is able to happen this year, anything, or is, is this program that they're looking to do in the spring, is that contingent on receiving external support, or what does that look like?
So, so we were actually able to establish a contact through the group that organizes the Credit for Life Fair, so even if we don't get the grant, I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to make something happen.
Okay.
Whether it be revolving or something like that.
Okay, good, yeah. If not, I was just curious if there was anything we could do with maybe local business or some other support to see if we can still make this happen, because I think it's definitely, definitely worthwhile, and want to make sure that these guys see this, see this through before they sail off to their next, next journey in life, so.
Yes, and honestly, aside from the grant, it's something that, that admin is, is planning on happening.
Good.
So we will certainly work to make it happen.
Okay, good to hear. I appreciate that. Any other comments from committee? All right, well, again, guys, thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation and raising the awareness.
Thank you, guys. Nice work. Good night.
Nice job. All right, moving on to next item on the agenda, the Deeper Learning Implementation Grant from Dr. Reese.
Good evening, everyone. So this summer, we applied for what's called the Deeper Learning Implementation Grant. It really allows us to continue the work that's already happening through our curriculum department with our learning walks going on in the classroom and looking at strategies to high-quality instructional practices that align with the high-quality instructional materials that are being used. We received a $14,000 grant from the state, and this will help us to leverage some of the resources and strategies and supports from the state level to then implement and kind of coordinate with what, what's already happening within the district. As part of the grant, we had to focus on one school, so we chose Hawthorne Brook just based on what we knew their designation to be at the time, but certainly our goal is to kind of learn the strategies and apply them at Hawthorne Brook, and then push that out once we have those supports in place to the other schools as well.
Any questions on the grant? And Dr. Reese, this is a one-time, I assume, is this to, is this a one-time program, or is this to implement something different moving forward, or what does that look like?
No, it's, so in terms of the grant funding, as of right now, it's a one-time grant funding, but really, it's more about the strategies that we'll develop by accessing the grant resources.
Okay. Thank you. All right, seeing no questions, I will take a motion to accept the deeper learning implementation grants of $14,000 for Hawthorne Brook Middle School.
So moved?
Second.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Can you hear me?
Who seconded? I'm sorry. It was either Randy. Okay, sorry. It can be either or. I'm good. You, I thought you moved it.
June, I think June moved it.
June, okay, sorry. I don't know why, but my system was blinking over here, so thank you.
No worries. All right, did someone have a question, or is that just?
Susan did.
Okay, go ahead, Susan.
And you may have said this, and I missed it. What happens when the grant funding runs out?
So it's, it's really about us building our capacity to lead the work, and so we'll, the grant funding helps get access to DESI and their resources and services, but we'll be able to maintain that because we'll have kind of professionally developed ourselves to lead the work beyond the grant.
Okay, so we'll be able to achieve our goals even if the grant money runs out?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, so we'll vote to, again, to accept this grant. David?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Randy? Susan?
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is unanimous. Thank you, everybody, and thank you, Dr. Reese. Appreciate it. Moving on to subcommittee reports, Accelerated Repair. Lisa Martin, any update?
No update.
Do we have a timeline for that getting closed out?
The state is still being the state.
All right. Go Massachusetts. All right, thank you, Lisa. The Ashby Building Committee, June?
Yes, so I had mentioned to you guys that on October 3rd, Jessica Callen was voted in on the Ashby Select Jessica Callen was voted in on the Ashby Select Board. The October 25th Ashby Select Board meeting, they reconfigured who was part of what committee and subcommittee and whatnot from their board. So David Nato has been the Ashby Select Board representation on the Ashby Elementary Building Committee since it was formed. And I just want to say he's been wonderful to work with, and I think him for his time. But his time is getting very, very spread thin, which I'm sure a lot of us understand. So he had asked that Jessica Callen step into his seat on the Ashby Elementary Building Committee. So at this point, I would like to make a motion to approve Jessica Callen as the Ashby Select Board representation on the Ashby Elementary School Building Committee in place of David Nato.
I'll second. So we're removing one and adding one?
Correct.
Any other questions on that? Seems pretty straightforward. All right, David?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Well, Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That is unanimous. Anything else, June? Any other updates?
We just applied for a grant for help with looking at the electrification at Ashby Elementary. So everyone cross your fingers we can get that, because that will help us get more information that we need to move on to the next steps. Oh, actually, and I have one more update. I'm sorry. One of the issues that we've been looking at was closing off the old, like, 50s wing because of asbestos. And that was boarded up about two weeks ago. So all the windows have been boarded. It's been sealed off and ventilated properly. So that's one checkbox that we can check off now, so.
Excellent. Did, so do we no longer have storage and stuff in there? Is that completely cleaned out and not accessible now?
It's empty and not accessible.
Excellent. Good. That's excellent. That's a good, that's a big milestone, actually. So appreciate that.
So you can't walk in the front door, walk through the building, and get to that wing anymore?
It's sealed off. As far as I'm aware, it's completely sealed now. I'm sure in case, there is still electricity through there. So in case of emergency, the facility staff could get into there if they needed to. But it's not something that people have access to. Brad has his, so I'm sure he has more information.
So staff and students can't go in there? It's sealed off for them. Got it.
Correct. Brad, you're muted, but I saw your hand up.
Sorry. That wing has been locked, has been locked and alarmed for at least two years now. So it has been inaccessible. So that's not a concern. That is certainly closed off at this point, and has been.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else, June?
No, that's good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Communications, I don't have an update for. I know Ms. Ivy and I had had a couple of conversations on how to proceed with this. So I think those discussions will still be ongoing, just to figure out where that sits due to everybody's busy schedules and everything else going on, so. Finance, Lisa Martin?
We're looking to arrange a meeting next week or the week after Thanksgiving. Just getting everyone's schedule is a little tight.
Just a bit of positive feedback, just from, at least Pepperell, anyway. I know just a lot of appreciation for the discussions, having the discussions over the last number of months when it comes to the budget planning and things like that. So there's, again, some appreciation for conversations with the district and trying to get ahead of issues. Not saying we haven't done that in the past. I think they've just, they may be more well-attended this year than in past years. But definitely being recognized that those efforts are out there. So appreciate all those that have been involved in those conversations. Negotiation personnel, Lisa and Dave?
A work in progress. So continuing, I think we have an in-person meeting December 4.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I added, I just put the executive session on as a placeholder. I didn't know if you wanted to provide an update or not. Usually, you know, we do that, so if you need the executive session, great. And if you don't, you know, we don't have to enter into it.
Yeah, I think, I think we will. I think just to get a quick update on where we're at and maybe get a read on how things are going would be good.
Yeah, I was actually wondering if that's what the executive session was for tonight. So we can touch on it more then.
Awesome. Thank you. Policy, Randy?
Bear with me just a little bit. I am on my phone because I started my computer an hour and a half before the meeting because I had something to do before it, and when I came back, it was doing updates. I think we have these meetings just perfectly timed out for updates. Yeah, it's still going an hour later here. So there are one, two, three, four, five policies up. I am pulling EEAA walkers and riders because I had received some changes or some suggestions from the attorney on that one. And because there's a bunch of stuff going on in my life, I was a little on the late side, getting a meeting together for this past week, forgetting about the Veterans Day holiday. So I was a few hours late in putting that together, so we couldn't have the meeting. So I will make a motion for ECAF security cameras in schools, DEE recyclable materials, EEA student transportation services, and EAG student transportation in private vehicles to be to be adopted. I'm just double checking that all the more for adoption. Yes, to be adopted as policy tonight.
I'll second.
Randy and Lisa, any questions on policies from anybody? And Randy, any significant feedback from the public or others?
I didn't receive any feedback on any of those policies. These really were kind of minor changes. These policies had not been looked at probably for about eight, 10 years. Maybe some of them five years. So this was just our normal cycle, five-year cycle review. Some minor changes to things that came up over the years from MASC.
Thank you. I'd say no questions or comments. So this is to approve ECAF, DEE, EEA, and EAG for adoption. David?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that's unanimous. Anything else from policy, Randy?
Now, we keep moving along. We've set up a schedule for the year. The two meetings a month. So the first meeting in the month is the five-year cycle review, where we're trying to go through all of the policies at least once in five years to make sure there's no major updates from the MASC and make sure there aren't any changes in our district and keep them up to date so they don't get 30 years out of date again. And the second meeting of the month, we're bringing up pertinent policies that are come up that we want to change, that legal issues that come up that we have to deal with immediately according to the MASC, or new policies that get brought up that we want to consider for the district.
Thank you, Randy. All right, moving on to liaisons to the towns. Any updates from Ashby? From June?
Nope, thank you.
All right, Pepperell, Dave?
No.
Townsend, Jess?
Nope.
All right. Okay, moving on to our next item is executive session. So I will take a motion to meet an executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A for the following purposes. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to and in preparation for collective bargaining with the North Middlesex Regional School District Teachers Association. Because an open discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. Purpose seven, to comply with or act under authority of the general or special law or federal grant aid requirements for the approval of executive session minutes dated November 2nd.
So moved, but mostly because you read the script.
Thanks.
Seconded.
Lisa, thank you. All right, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June? Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Did I just not hear you, Randy, or did you?
Oh, I didn't hear you say my name.
Sorry. Randy? Okay, thank you. Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so we will now meet an executive session. The committee will not reconvene in open session, so we'll flip on over.